Turn on your cameras so I can have the clerk do a quorum check for me and then I will call the meeting to order after she's done that.
I can confirm quorum, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I will call this special meeting of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee to order. I'm going to read a statement and then I'll make just a couple of comments about special meetings. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489, extension 2425. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact sppc@london.ca. Colleagues, this is a special meeting. We will deal with the items on the agenda, but there is no ability to add new items to the agenda that are unrelated to the item that the meeting has been called for. I will start off by asking if there are any disclosures of pecuniary interest for the matter that we're discussing today. Okay, seeing none, there's no consent, there's no scheduled items. We have one item for direction. It is the temporary reintroduction of a mask bylaw to limit the spread of COVID-19. A request by councillors Helmer, Turner and Cassidy. There, in your package, you also have a draft bylaw. So with that, I will start by turning this over to whichever councillor would like to start from that group. Councillor Helmer, go ahead.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. First, I want to say I really appreciate you calling the special meeting and colleagues making time to attend. I know it's not ideal to have special meetings called on short notice. I do under, Acting Mayor, I see that the Medical Officer of Health is on the call and are we expecting just to be able to ask questions to Dr Summers? Or does he want to start with some kind of comments? Or are you looking for us to introduce a motion and then get into discussion about that? I just want to check in terms of the order of operations.
Yes, my understanding is that Dr Summers does not have a presentation. I'm well, I'm very open, given this is a committee meeting, to having him say a few words if you'd like to ask that of him, but he's certainly available to answer any questions. So, Dr Summers, maybe you can confirm, were you anticipating speaking or providing introductory comments? No? Okay, so he's saying no, but certainly he's here to be engaged with and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, so what I'd like to do then, I think, is I'd like to move that we reintroduce the bylaw, the draft bylaw that's there, and then I'll make some comments about that and I certainly have some questions for my Dr Summers. I'm sure many other people do, but we can handle it throughout the course of the debate.
Okay, I'll look for a secondar for that motion. Councillor Turner. Okay, moved and seconded. We will start the debate. Councillor Helmer, you want to start that off?
Yeah, I just want to say, colleagues, I know you've probably are receiving a lot of the same kind of correspondence that I've been receiving and I know that this is an issue where people are very charged up, you know, one way or the other. Not very many people, I would say, that seem to be very undecided. And for me, I want to really focus in on what we're actually proposing, which is to reintroduce public health measures that we had in place at the beginning of the pandemic when the incidence of the virus was much, much lower than it is now and the damage it was causing was much lower. When we passed this mask bylaw back in 2020, unfortunately, fifty-seven people had already died in our community from the virus, but that is a lot less than have died in the last three months in our community. You know, we're almost at a hundred people now who've died since January. The virus is still causing a lot of damage. It's still a significant problem. And what we are proposing in reintroducing the mask bylaw for a limited period of time is not to maintain these mask rules forever, but to maintain them for a little bit longer while the virus is still causing so much damage in the community. So that is really what I want to emphasize. We're not talking about forever. We're talking about for a short period of time until the incidence of the virus is at a much lower level. We know from the recommendations from our Medical Officer of Health, from the Chief Medical Officer of Health in Ontario, masks are strongly recommended indoors because they reduce transmission of the virus. And reducing transmission of the virus helps with all the other problems that come with it. We are certainly in a much better position now in 2022 than we were in 2020. You know, a huge percentage of the population is vaccinated, boosted. The vaccines are proving to be extremely protective for a lot of people. It's a much better situation than we were in in 2020 in terms of the range of things that can be done. But masking is the cheapest, least intrusive, very easy, effective thing that people can continue to do to cut down on the transmission, to kind of keep this thing contained for the next little while so we can really lower the incidence in our community. I know that it's not popular with a lot of people right now, but I do think it is necessary for the next little while, which is why I'm bringing it up, even though it's resulting in some rather difficult conversations, I'm sure, with many of your constituents. I know people are really tired of the virus. They want to move on. They want to just go back to normal. But we can't put our heads in the sand and just kind of pretend that everything's fine and everything will be fine if we stop masking. The reason people are wearing masks now, even when there's not a rule, is because they know it's a risk and that masks help. And I think it's incumbent on us to put in rules for our community that are going to protect people.
Point of personal privilege.
Councillor Van Holst, point of personal privilege. Go ahead.
Yes, I think characterizing colleagues as putting their heads in the sand is not appropriate. We need to look at many factors of this issue and not the single one that may be coming forward today. So I think that's not the way to look at, not the way to describe this situation or the people that have written in with their concerns and/or certainly the colleagues like myself who may not support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go back to Councillor Helmer. I think you've made a point there. I'm happy to move on, though. So, Councillor Helmer, you can continue.
I think I'm just close to wrapping up. I will say that's perhaps unfair way of characterizing things and I take Councillor Van Holst's point. I guess what I mean more precisely is I don't think it's a good idea to do nothing as a municipality, given the situation that we're in. So that's what I'd like to say, colleagues. I do think masking, we can tell from the research, the more people who are wearing masks, the lower the transmission of the virus in our community is going to be. I think it's a common sense, straightforward thing that we can ask people to do that's going to help reduce the incidence of the virus and all the damage that it causes. So I hope that you will support it. Sometimes we're called on to do things that are pretty difficult. The last time we introduced the mask bylaw and passed it, I don't think it was particularly difficult and I think it's harder this time because the context and the situation has changed quite a bit. But I hope that we'll do it again, at least until the ninth of May and hopefully the virus has really gone down, the level of virus in the community has gone down and we don't have to extend it again.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I've got a speakers list open with no one on it yet. So who would like to speak next? Councillor Lehman, and just flag me, I'll add you to the list, please.
Thank you. And colleagues, the province has a team of medical professionals and through this pandemic has relied on them to craft health regulations. Our Chief Medical Officer of Health at the Middlesex London Health Unit has the ability to enact an order requiring masking, but has deemed it not necessary. I am not a medical professional, nor as a councillor, do I have the resources to have top medical advisers as part of my staff. How can I, in my role as a councillor, second guess the province and our local health unit that do have those resources? The proposed bylaw to continue masking would be extremely divisive and confusing. With over a ninety percent vaccination rate, Londoners have done their part to keep us safe as possible through the last two years. Now is a time to move forward into the endemic phase of COVID. I will not be supporting this motion that contradicts the provincial direction. Going forward, I encourage all to do what they deem necessary for themselves and not judge those that choose to wear a mask or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr Presiding Officer. I do have a question for Dr Summers, who is our Medical Officer of Health. The Chief Medical Officer of Health is the title of the doctor who looks after public health for Ontario as a whole. And our Medical Officer of Health is Dr Alex Summers and I would like to, it is very complex, the use of a section twenty-two order and I wonder if you could, in as simple terms as possible, explain when, why and how a medical officer of health enacts that section of the HPPA.
Dr Summers.
Thank you, Councillor Cassidy, and thank you for the invitation to be here this afternoon to discuss this really important issue. Just to the question at hand, section twenty-two orders are a provision within the Health Protection and Promotion Act in which a medical officer of health can order someone or a class of people to do something in light of an emergent and immediate risk of a communicable disease in order to reduce the transmission of that communicable disease. That legislation does exist. It is intended, however, to be used in a focused, time-limited and sparing response to that immediate risk. The intent truly is to provide MOHs with a tool to respond urgently to acute situations for which immediate action is required. In this context, as we speak, there is not, in the Middlesex and London region, a new and emerging risk for which provincial authorities are not aware. The province has the same access to the information that I have. The risk in Middlesex London is not unique to Middlesex London at this time. And as a result, it is not an appropriate use of a section twenty-two order by a medical officer of health in order to require masking at this time. So it's truly a question of the authority to use the section twenty-two and that threshold has not been reached and you've seen across the province, MOHs have not used a class section twenty-two order in this context as it would essentially override a provincial decision in the context of no additional information and in the context of no new or emerging threat localized to our jurisdiction. There are examples where a class order could be used. If we had a brand-new variant that was emerging out of the Middlesex London region, and I hope that is never the case, but if there was a brand-new variant that was emerging here for which the province did not have the time nor information available to act immediately, that would, as an example, be appropriate, unappropriate use of a potential class order under section twenty-two of the Health Protection and Promotion Act. That is not the context with which we are operating at this time. Happy to take any further questions on that issue.
Thank you. I have another question for the doctor, Mr Presiding Officer. Dr Summers, back in 2020, when this council enacted a mask bylaw for the local London region alone, Dr Mackey, our Medical Officer of Health at the time, did not issue a section twenty-two order for the same reasons that you're not doing so today. His recommendation, however, was strongly urging people to consider, to wear masks when they were in indoor public spaces. What are your thoughts on mask wearing in today's context?
Dr Summers.
Thank you for that question, Councillor Cassidy. Given the current prevalence of COVID-19 in our region, I continue to recommend the use of masking in indoor environments as part of a layered approach to reducing the risk of transmission and those layers include vaccination and notably the booster dose as well. In addition to modifying your activities to reduce your social contact, particularly in numbers, as we continue to see transmission heavily in our region, masking continues to be an appropriate form of source control and I've certainly asked that organizations consider the options and organizations can consider the options available to them to increase masking amongst their staff and patrons relative to the risk of COVID-19 to their staff, patrons and clients as well as the risks of the tools that they will be using. As an example, in that instance, the Middlesex London Health Unit as an employer is requiring staff to wear masks when, even in our non-health office space settings. We're still required, under provincial regulations, to have masking in our healthcare context, so in our clinics, et cetera. But in our non-clinical context, we are still requiring masking. We considered the benefits of masking within our office context and that will disrupt and slow transmission, reducing the risk in our office context. And we also considered the risks or harms of putting in that requirement. For us as an employer and as an organization, the benefits were present and clear and for us, the risks were minimal. Our staff tolerate wearing masks. We have not had concerns from staff around wearing masks. It is not disrupting our work and, given the fact that we have less people in our offices right now because many are working remotely, a majority of people can actually work in our office space throughout the day without having the mask on all the time. Therefore, when we as an organization did our risk and benefit analysis, the risks of continuing masking at this time won the day and we are going to continue to mask for the time being. The risk-benefit analysis for individual organizations may be different than what we as an employer have done. So I can comment certainly on the impact of masking, the fact that it will reduce transmission and that we continue to recommend it in indoor settings, particularly in public environments for individuals to consider in order to take a reduced risk of transmission as part of that layered approach.
Thank you, Dr Summers. Thank you, Mr Presiding Officer. That's it for me for now.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Further speakers. Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you. I certainly have some questions for our Medical Officer of Health as well. The first one, you know, Ontario is very masked, socially distanced, highly vaccinated, vaccine segregated and lockdown society, yet Omicron walked through, like many of those precautions, were ineffective. So why do you consider that continuing masking would make a significant difference?
Dr Summers.
Thank you, councillor, for your question. To the first part of the question, the impact of the Omicron wave on deaths, hospitalizations and ICU admissions, as well as the functioning of our healthcare system, was significant and it would have been significantly worse if not for the layered public health measures that input in place. Estimates from the Ontario COVID-19 Science Table have shown that there was an estimated thirty-seven to forty percent reduction in hospital admissions as a result of the booster dose campaign that happened through the Omicron wave. in hospital admissions as a result of the booster-dose campaign that happened through the Omicron wave, and that ICU admissions were reduced by a potential 30% as a result of that third-dose booster campaign. So certainly, the impact of the Omicron wave, despite the public health measures, was significant. However, it would have been significantly worse with regards to hospital admissions, ICU admissions, and deaths, if not for those measures. Moving forward, the impact of ongoing masking and masking requirements in our region will likely reduce transmission, although the studies have shown that it is the layered approach of interventions that results in a notable decline. The singular impact of masking, moving forward in the context of our highly-vaccinated population, particularly booster-dose coverage of over 80% in 65 and above, as well as no capacity limits and ongoing changes in behavior of our population. And when I say that, I mean people are starting to return to pre-pandemic activities, increased socialization, et cetera. In the context of that, the singular intervention of a mask mandate will... It is not clear exactly what the impact would be at a population level, although at a personal level, as part of a layered approach, it will reduce the risk of transmission.
Yeah, I have a number of questions. If I can continue then. Do you think that many people would continue wearing masks if you made that suggestion, regardless of whether or not City Hall created a bylaw enforcing that?
Dr. Summers.
Thanks for that question, councillor. On the question of adherence to mask-wearing, I think it is unclear how many people will continue to wear masks voluntarily. We certainly continue to see, in the public setting, that people are wearing masks in indoor environments. But there's also been a reduction, notably, albeit anecdotally, when we see masking adherence with the removal of the provincial mandate. It is hard, and I think I do not have information that can project how many people will continue to wear masks voluntarily. We don't have information to that end. Nor do we have information that would show, in this current context, in this current context, how much adherence will be increased by a masking requirement in the form of a bylaw. Evidence has shown that, in jurisdictions where masking mandates have been in place previously, adherence to masking has gone up. However, it does take time for that to happen, and it is certainly impacted by the political and contextual factors that surround those requirements.
Thank you. Well, there's certainly one way to find out, and that would be allowing people to make the choice, which is what they... What many people who've written us are asking for. Now, my question, next question. Have you seen any of the studies that conclude masking is not effective in a communal setting?
Thank you for that question. We are fortunate to have Public Health Ontario, our provincial scientific and technical experts, who have done broad reviews on the impact of masking. And when they do those reviews, they look at the totality of the studies that have been done in order to determine the impact of all public health interventions, given the evidence that exists. Studying the impacts of masking always requires what is described as observational study, where we have to try and understand the impact of these interventions in a real-life environment. It's hard to control for all the factors, which is why we know that masking is its most impactful when it is done with other interventions like physical distancing, vaccination, of course, symptom screening, et cetera. The totality of the evidence continues to suggest that masking, both on its own and in combination with other interventions, will reduce the risk of transmission of COVID-19.
Okay, well, you know, when I think of, in a totality, I also think of those commercials in the past that said, you know...
Councillor, I just, I'm going to caution you. If you're asking a guest questions, I would say ask questions. If you provide commentary, I don't, you're not to debate our guests. You can certainly ask questions, and then you can also provide a debate and dialogue for our colleagues. But I want you to be cautious about debating someone who is here to provide us information, if you could. Certainly, questions are well within order, and so are comments. But let's not mix the two in the middle of a Q&amp;A session.
Right. Well, I think you're right to say so. I'll hold that comment. I don't... I'll hold that for later. The, can masks be harmful to children? Because I see that we're hoping that our bylaw applies not just to children over 12, but now children three and over. So that's my next question.
Dr. Summers.
Thanks so much for that question. We have systematic reviews and evidence synthesis that have been provided to the province from Public Health Ontario. The most recent review is from mid to the end of February, and it looks specifically at the impacts of mask-wearing in children and COVID-19. Given the comprehensive review of the evidence, there is no objective evidence for reduced respiratory function, so lung function, in children that wore masks. There may be reports of complaints. They are subjective, and the studies have shown that. There's also no evidence of negative cognitive impacts on children as well. So the studies to date have not shown negative health impacts on children from wearing masks.
Thank you. Can masks create a condition of hypoxia? There's the complaints that people may not be getting enough oxygen by having that barrier in front of them.
There is absolutely no evidence for reduced respiratory function or causing hypoxia as a result of masking.
Okay. Thank you. Do you... Do you consider this a government overreach? For, I know that, and I appreciate that you're not stepping across your boundaries by implementing a Section 22. Do you... I mean, do you think that's what a city council would be doing? Do we have the authority to tell people to take these kinds of health measures?
Councillor, if you're asking about the authority of municipal council, we certainly have our own legal staff and supports to address that question. I know Dr. Summers can certainly comment on the legal authority of the health unit and the medical profession perhaps more widely, but I'm not sure he... I don't want to put him on the spot of being an expert in municipal government legal authority. Certainly, I think the question we can have answered, but that may be a question for our staff and not Dr. Summers. That being said, Dr. Summers, if you feel there's a space in there that you need to respond to, I'm happy to give that to you, but I... Okay, no. So councillor, I think that's a great question, but perhaps we could save that one for our staff, and we can get some advice from you from that perspective, if you want to talk about the scope of legal responsibility for the municipal government.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going through a number of questions here. Mr. Chair, this meeting came up on kind of short notice, and of course, there isn't an opportunity for the public to participate in some... And so I did have some people suggest some questions, and so I'd hope to go through some of those. I think you're correct. That's more a legal question for our staff. The... And I do have a number of other questions here, but I would also, I also realize that I've taken up some time. I wonder if there's other councillors that have questions as well. I'm happy to come back to this or continue if there's no one else on the speakers list.
Thank you, councillor, and I am doing timing. I was backing out Dr. Summers' answers from the time you were consuming. So you've used four minutes of five minutes, but you're right. It's committee, so you can get back on the speakers list anytime. So if you'd like me to see if there are other speakers, I could do that at this time, and you could get back on the list later, if that's your preference.
Okay. Maybe just one last question. I think the waves that we've experienced seem to correspond a lot with the regular flu seasons. And are we... When would we expect to exit the spring flu season?
Dr. Summers.
Certainly. The, in pre-pandemic years with regards to influenza, the influenza season often has variable endings and may linger into March or into April, particularly if we have multiple strains of influenza moved through our population. There are other years where it may end earlier in February or before, and it often correlates, again, with increasing activity in outdoor environments as opposed to indoor environments. In the last number of years, as a result of that layered public health protection against respiratory illness, we have seen very, very little influenza, and that's been the same this year.
Okay, councillor, did you want me to see if someone else wanted to speak? Or you're pretty much at your asking questions time? Okay. Okay, let me see if there's... Well, actually, I do have someone on the speakers list next. I have councillor Lewis. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Morgan. I'm going to right up front say I don't have any questions for Dr. Summers. I've followed his public briefings and appreciated him making time for us as well. I want to be respectful of his time. So before I offer any comment or ask any questions of our staff, I want to yield the floor if anybody has questions for Dr. Summers first, because I do want to be respectful of his time as well today.
Okay, I think that's fair. We have colleagues who have some questions for our staff, but with respect to your time, Dr. Summers, I think colleagues are looking to make sure we get the questions for you out of the way so that you can go back to the work that you're doing, hopefully as soon as possible. Other colleagues who want to be on the speakers list? Councillor Van Holst, did you have any further questions for Dr. Summers? Because I've got colleagues who, like councillor Lewis, who want to ask our staff questions. I know you have some questions for staff, but I have no one else looking... Oh, I have councillor Hopkins, actually. Let me go to her. Sorry, councillor, I didn't see on the screen, but I see your hand up. Councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I hope you can hear me. I'm having difficulties getting my internet service going, so I am on another computer here that has no video, but I'm glad you could hear me. I do have a couple of questions for Dr. Summers, and thank you, Dr. Summers, for being here. And thank you, councillor Cassidy, too, for asking the questions around Section 22, because that's one thing I think is important to understand and know that that is available to the health unit, given if the need is there, and I know it has been used in the past. But two quick questions, most of them are for staff. But Dr. Summers, I've had a few questions around this policy that we did have in place. And does it pertain to apartment buildings and schools? Or maybe this is a staff question, I'm not sure, but...
So thank you for that question. I will look certainly to the staff and the drafters of the bylaw for clarification. On my read, schools are exempt, and I am not off the top of my head recollecting if the public spaces of an apartment building were included in the bylaw or not. So I would look towards staff, again, understanding the drafting of that piece of proposal.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think it's important to clarify that schools aren't part of this policy. I do understand apartment buildings were not part of that. I don't know if we made changes. It's been sort of confusing to see how these policies have weaved together the past couple of years. But I appreciate your response. I do have another quick question. And maybe it is a staff question, but I know we have been using wastewater measurements to find out how much COVID there is in the municipality. I'd like to know a little bit more on how the health unit relies on those, on that data or not.
Thank you for that question, councillor. The wastewater collection is done through academic partners at Western University, as well as supported by staff at the city as well. And it's available publicly at a website called 519covid.ca. In our region, wastewater data has largely followed, or if not lagged, behind the case data that we have seen. In some jurisdictions, it has been a leading indicator, not the case in our jurisdiction. It has typically been a lagging indicator or consistent on the same trajectory indicator. At this time, the last wastewater data point that we have is from March 16th, so last week. And at that time, wastewater data, the viral load in the wastewater was quite low and had been holding steady at that low level. Again, consistent with what we've been seeing in our relative case counts, acknowledging it is just a proportion of the total case counts that we are seeing.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And councillor Hopkins, just for, just to give you some help, there is an attached bylaw within the package, either online. If you're having trouble getting that, we can certainly have the clerks email it to you. But it does identify establishments, what the bylaw would apply to and where it would not. So it's clearly delineated in the proposed bylaw. And if you're having some trouble accessing that, I know you said you had some trouble with the internet connection. Just let me know now, and I'll endeavor to ask the clerks to send you a copy of that if you can't access it.
I'll find it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Councillor Fife-Miller.
Thank you, Chair. And through you, just to Dr. Summers. Dr. Summers, the health unit has actively, I'm going to say, advertised the use of masks throughout the pandemic. Looking at this policy, and this policy has been requested to be in effect until May 9th, understanding that there's no crystal ball, do you see the health unit moving towards a policy where they're not suggesting the use of masks in the near future? Or do you see this as a policy that will probably be here for quite a while?
Dr. Summers.
Thanks for that question, councillor. As I answer this, I will maybe come from the context of how I see, in the absence of a crystal ball, the health unit's recommendations with regards to masking over the next six to eight weeks, specifically around our recommendations. I fully anticipate that COVID will be here to stay for the long run and that we will have times over the course of a year where COVID rates will go up and come down, and they will, I think, constantly be on the lower end in the warmer summer months. At this time, we continue to see significant COVID transmission, although it is notably less than what we saw through the peak of the Omicron wave. And therefore, because of that high level, we continue to recommend masking. The way that I have framed it for myself and in my public statements is that masking will likely still be my recommendation well through March and through April. The reason being, the ongoing colder weather that keeps people indoors, as well as the experience we've seen from other respiratory illnesses and the subsequent decline as the spring months unfold. There is always going to be a risk of COVID-19 in our community ongoing. That risk may be higher at certain times of the year. And therefore, there is always going to have to be a consideration of using tools like masking, vaccination, adjusting your social contacts in order to reduce your risk to COVID-19. And that's where there is, to some degree, an individual or organizational assessment about the risk that you want to tolerate at any time, recognizing that the risk that we had prior to the pandemic, or even the risk that we had in the summer of 2020, may never return. The risk may always be higher than that baseline.
Thank you. So with that, and I think, looking forward, it probably is safe to say that the position... I think, looking forward, it it probably is safe to say that the position or our position of our health unit will be that masking will become something that will in essence, will become more commonplace and will become something that's more commonplace in the community as a whole. Some people will be comfortable with it, some people won't be comfortable with it. But it really, as time goes on, won't be based as much on a change in transmission as just a commonality that becomes in public. Is that fair to say?
Thanks for that clarification, councillor. Yes, generally, I think it is. I think the utility of a mask in disrupting respiratory illness transmission has has become clearer from the evidence through the pandemic. And I think it will be one of those tools in our toolbox that individually or organizationally we may use throughout the year in order to reduce transmission, particularly in settings where highest-risk individuals, those of older age, are found. The use of masking, for example, through the winter months in long-term care homes and retirement homes, I think will be, I think there's a fairly decent chance that will continue to be an important intervention in the future. Don't know, and a lot of it has to do with what type of risk we are willing to take on as organizations, individuals, and a society.
Thank you, Dr. Summers. That's extremely helpful.
Okay, other speakers. Councillor Van Wolkst.
Thank you very much. So the I have a handful of more questions. The first regarding masks, what's the mechanism by which you believe masks are reducing the the transmission?
Thank you for that question, councillor. I would divide the mechanism of impact from the masks into two categories. One is the role that the mask plays as a piece of personal protective equipment, which means it does play a role in protecting the individual who is wearing it from inhaling droplets of the COVID-19, droplets which contain the COVID-19 virus that are expelled by somebody who is infectious with that illness. We know that proximity does matter, so the closer you are to somebody who's infectious, the higher the probability that you will be exposed to COVID-19 if they are coughing or breathing. As that distance increases, the risk does drop, but it doesn't hit zero. It's a it is a gradual drop off, and we know that transmission can happen over farther distances, particularly in indoor environments where there's poor ventilation or certain air patterns within that space. But the mask, from a personal protective equipment perspective, may block the inhalation of that particle, and as a result, block the infection of COVID-19. But you can see why it needs to be a layered approach in order to be, to have the full impact, but it does play a role. The other side of the impact of the mask on disrupting transmission is as what we describe as source control, which means it also protects those around you from being exposed to droplets of COVID-19 if you are infectious with COVID-19 and wearing a mask. And it does so by physically blocking the particles that you would be exhaling through speaking, breathing, or coughing. So the impact and mechanism of the mask is twofold. One is a piece of personal protective equipment, the other as source control.
Okay, thank you. And if I can follow up on that, if you were to make a recommendation with regard to masks, do you think it would be better if with source control, where we had the people who were actually sick wear the masks, or is it better if all the people who are not sick wore the masks?
Both, frankly, can play a role. We have certainly seen impact from source control at a population level and in organizations like long-term care homes and hospitals, because it is able to prevent transmission from those who don't yet know they are sick with COVID-19 as that source control. So it plays a significant impact in those contexts as source control, notably amongst those that are sick with COVID-19 but may not know it. Certainly, our guidance and strong recommendation publicly is that individuals who are sick with a respiratory illness, number one, should be isolating, but if they are going out for a medical appointment, they absolutely should be wearing a mask as a part of source control. So that is also a recommendation we would provide.
Thank you, and I certainly think that's the kind of thing for people to do if they if they think they might be ill. Now, I've never caught a cold or a flu because somebody sneezed in my face or in my mouth. For me, it's generally because I get ill because I'm rundown, not getting enough sleep, doing too much, too much work, something like that. What what do we have to say about that? And maybe you could add in there two things. Well, let me just okay, I'll add. And in some of those times, I'll pop some vitamin C, some vitamin D, and and then it usually usually goes away. I'm rarely sick for for those reasons. But what are we, what are we recommending for people in in terms of keeping themselves healthy or creating better barriers? Is it the environment? Is that what is called, there's a term for it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's escaped me. But what's what's the health unit recommending with regard to those kinds of things?
When when we provide recommendations for people to avoid respiratory infections, we consider a multitude of factors that individuals should consider to protect themselves. We have to always think about an individual's underlying health conditions, and yes, indeed, an underlying health condition as well as general health, and notably when it comes to COVID age, is an important part of the individual's risk of severe out from from COVID-19. Another factor to consider is certainly exposure to the virus and reducing the risk through these protective environments and protective contexts and things like masks like we've talked about today. The other protection that, as a health unit, we strongly recommend is, of course, vaccination. The impact of the vaccine has been demonstrated repeatedly to reduce notably severe outcomes, particularly in hospital admissions, ICU admissions, and death. And that's why we continue to recommend individuals receive a primary series. When we're talking about Moderna or Pfizer, that's two doses, and all relevant boosters. And for anybody 12 and older, they are eligible for a booster at this time. That vaccination status is critical as part of the tools, again, to use that word again, that an individual can use to protect themselves against respiratory illnesses and, in this instance, COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. You bring up vaccines. Are you aware of any adverse side effects from the vaccines?
Thank you for that question, councillor. Amongst the mRNA COVID-19 vaccines, which are certainly the most common and predominant vaccines in our region, we have seen a small number of side effects. The one that has been well discussed is the risks of myocarditis and pericarditis, particularly amongst people under the age of 30. That risk is very low, but it has been documented, and it's one of the reasons why the Pfizer vaccine is preferentially recommended in individuals under 30 relative to the Moderna vaccine. As always, acknowledge that the risk of myocarditis and pericarditis is significantly higher from being infected with COVID-19 than it is from getting the mRNA vaccine. So that would be one side effect for which we have certainly spoken to and and continue to monitor. The other one is, as always with anything like a vaccine, a small, very small risk of anaphylactic reaction, which we've seen very rarely when it comes to the mRNA vaccines of Pfizer and Moderna.
And I'm gonna jump in here, and I didn't want to cut you off, Dr. Summers, because you started, but the item before us is a is a mask bylaw. And so I do think that there are some questions related to layers of protection that are probably relevant within that, but I need colleagues to stay squarely within the the reasons for this particular meeting, which is the temporary reintroduction of a mask bylaw by the municipality and not necessarily moving into a Q and A about about the vaccines themselves, which which starts to get much further away from the reason that we're here before us and the matter we're considering before us. So I'll just caution colleagues on that. And councillor, you're at about five minutes of Q and A back and forth, so do you mind if I go to the next person on the list, and then you can certainly get back on it?
I do not mind, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have councillor Lewis has put up his hand again.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and, or sorry, Mr. Acting Mayor today. So I want to offer a few comments here, colleagues. And we heard it referenced by both councillor Van Wolkst and Dr. Summers earlier about the totality of things. And Dr. Summers himself mentioned that other contexts matter, the the social context, the economic context, of course, the health context. We have to weigh all of those, not just one factor. That's our job. And we've actually heard in the last 24, 36 hours from literally hundreds of Londoners by email. I've had text messages, I've had phone calls, I've had social media messages. We also have to consider, because we are elected representatives, what the people we are elected, who we are elected to represent are telling us as well. They have to have a voice in this, too, and we cannot dismiss that. When we look at what we've heard from Dr. Summers today, the the local situation does not meet the threshold to warrant a section 22 order. There is no emerging or urgent need or risk that would warrant that. Hospitalization rates continue to decline. The wastewater rates, we've heard, are low and have been remaining low in the last couple of weeks. And we are not in 2020 anymore. When we brought forward a temporary mask bylaw in 2020, we were operating at the time in a vacuum. There was no provincial regulation on masking. That is not the case today. And whether or not you like the province's decisions on the masking regulations that they are keeping in place till April and the ones that they have chosen to lift as of yesterday, that is a provincial government decision, advised by the Chief Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Moore, for the province of Ontario. So I think it's absolutely not valid to compare it to when we introduced the bylaw in 2020. The province has not vacated the space. They've simply changed the regulations. And we've heard from Dr. Summers, we've heard from literally thousands of Londoners. The one group we haven't heard from, though, is our staff, and I think it's important that they're involved in this discussion as well, because it ultimately falls on them to enforce if we go ahead with a bylaw. And it also puts some of our frontline staff in the potential situation of being at risk of confrontation with members of the public. And there are also, and and these have been raised, councillor Van Wolkst actually referenced this earlier, but I think it's a valid point. There are questions, because the province now occupies this space with its own regulations legally, we should probably hear some advice, too. We heard some legal advice back in June of 2020 when we brought forward a masking bylaw then. I think it'd actually be relevant to hear, and I recognize that our city solicitor may want to provide any advice that he has in camera. So I think I'll ask first a question of probably, it'll probably be Mr. Katolik, Mr. Chair, I don't know if he's with us or not, but through you to our staff, do we have, do we foresee particular enforcement challenges if we go ahead with this bylaw at this time superseding the provincial regulations?
Yes, and I can let you know Mr. Katolik is on the line, and he's certainly welcome to answer and or throw it to any other relevant staff.
Yes, through the chair. We don't see any enforcement challenges at this time. However, there may be time to apply for a set fine, because the old set fine was repealed in December of 2020. So I would defer to our legal department or city solicitor on the process of applying for a new set fine.
Thank you for that, Mr. Katolik. So through you, Mr. Chair, I guess, to our city solicitor or other staff that he may wish to to bring into the conversation, of course. Given that the province has a set of regulations around this, I'm wondering if there might be some advice that he would provide to us in terms of our legal authority to move forward with something like this at this time. I know councillor Hopkins referenced whether or not this would be applicable in schools, and and the answer was that schools themselves will be exempt. And obviously, that's because those are provincial institutions. So could our city solicitor provide us some advice on on the scope and and ability for us to enact this?
So councillor, I just can give you a piece of information, because it was you who raised, you wanted to make use of Dr. Summers' time while he was here. I conferred with Dr. Summers, he has until four. So I'm in the hands of colleagues. If you'd like to get advice from our solicitor, I I know that there's a level of advice that he would give in camera. I'll allow him to identify when we need to go on camera and when not. But I wanted to to give you that context. Dr. Summers will be available until about four today for for colleagues, so. And Mr. Card, with the question that the councillor asked, that would be an in-camera response or a public response that you'd be willing to give?
If the question pertains to the time that it takes to have set fines approved, I can tell you it takes a number of weeks. It's usually at the convenience of the regional senior justice of the peace or designate that approves these set fines. It's actually, you know, part of the task is to prepare short-form wordings, but those already exist. It's just a question of getting the set fine approved. Other matters are things that opinions are things that should be discussed in camera, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Card. Councillor Lewis?
In that case, Mr. Chair, I'm going to move that we go in camera to receive legal advice. And we'll see if there's a second for that.
Okay, there's a second in Mr. Fife-Miller. So this is a motion to go into camera to receive legal advice. I know that there isn't a a reason on the public agenda, so it's moved in second. The clerk, could you read our standard reason for this for the public record? Someone has a microphone that the clerk will need.
Thank you. Through the chair, the reason would be to consider a matter pertaining to litigation or potential litigation and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
Okay, so that is the reason. If anybody is, if everybody's okay with that reason, I can I can certainly have a vote on the motion to move into camera, but I just wanted to make sure the reason was clear, given it wasn't on the public agenda. So is there any discussion moving in camera? Okay. Are we doing this? This will be an in-the-system vote. I'm going to open moving in camera for voting.
Mr. Presiding Chair, it's councillor Hopkins. I vote yes.
I'm also in favor. I'm unable to log in.
Councillor Close is also a yes.
Councillor Turner, yeah, it's not showing on my eScribe.
Colleagues, it's not open yet in eScribe, so if you're in eScribe, you'll still have a chance to vote. If you're not, we can record those votes that have been publicly noted. The clerk's just loading the reason in.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 13 to.
Okay, we'll need a few minutes to just make that motion and to get everything in order for being in camera. and get everything in order for being in camera.
Okay, can I do a quorum check? Colleagues, just turn on your screen. Okay. Yeah, we're good for a quorum. Okay, so we're back in public session, colleagues. I'm going to ask have Counselor Lehman report out from our in-camera session.
Thank you. I'll report out that the subject for what we adjourned to in session, matters are advanced. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're back to the speakers list and I had Counselor Turner as next on the public speakers list. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And I appreciate we're coming up on the four o'clock hour. So I'll try to be brief and I just, I recognize that everyone's pretty tired of this. And I mentioned we're probably getting tired of the debate too. So I'm not imagining there's going to be a lot of support for this motion. But I want to describe why I felt important to support Counselor Helmer in his motion. Health decisions shouldn't be made on a populist basis. I agree that the, I agree to support the motion because I believe the provincial government has been a bit premature in removing these public health measures. And there's still an appreciable risk in our community. It's also backed up by opinion from the members of the provincial science table as well. The question of overreach has been brought up a bit. And, but it was municipalities that first brought masking bylaws in the first place. They also were the first to bring in smoking bylaws. We have a history of watching out for residents. Municipalities are responsible for the wellbeing of those within their jurisdictions. And we're also allowed to bring bylaws to that effect, provided they don't conflict with provincial or federal orders. Province rescinded its order and that's their prerogative. But this isn't a case of contradicting it or superseding it, as has been misstated earlier. It's just exercising within our space and we're permitted to do that. There's no one measure that's going to protect us. Protections are most effective in layers so that if one layer is defeated, there's another one to back it up. Masks are about one of them. And really, it's one of the lowest measures of control in the hierarchy. Getting vaccinated, staying home when sick, distancing, limiting contacts, they all have more impact on reducing transmissions. But they also have more impact on the level of activity within the community. And likewise, it would also be foolish to say that because COVID is affecting us globally, it doesn't make sense to take measures at the federal level. Or affecting us nationally, it doesn't make sense to take them at the provincial level. Or if it's affecting us provincially, it doesn't make sense to take local action. This recommendation is to maintain at least one level of control with minimal impact on people's ability to engage in social, retail and workspaces throughout our community. Everyone in this debate will find some shelter in something that was said by someone someplace. There's a diversity of opinion out there and a lot of contortion about what others have said to fit opinion too. I spent the last two years of my career working shoulder to shoulder with the doctors, epidemiologists and infection control practitioners who've been tasked with our local and provincial response to this pandemic. This is the stuff I know intimately and I'm not just speaking off the cuff. Some things that we've noticed, those jurisdictions that were quick to respond saw lower impacts down the road. Those that lagged ended up having to take more impactful measures later. And unfortunately, Ontario has this trend of being one of the jurisdictions that have been slow to implement and early to lift measures. And this has resulted in large swings in cases throughout the waves. It's got to be noted that each of the previous waves was only brought under control through the use of public health interventions. My hope with this motion is that we can continue to take small measures so that we can avoid more costly stay-at-home orders later. The city's largest disaster was the Victoria Day disaster in 1881, saw approximately 182 Londoners die when this team of Victoria capsized. In the past two years, there's been a total of 356 deaths in our region. That's the equivalent of one Victoria disaster each year. This past wave, the wave we're just getting through, had roughly as many deaths as the previous two highest casualty waves. And those occurred before we had vaccines. In 2020 and 2021, case count started to increase just after March break and led to our first and third waves. We're starting to see the same indicators now. As you heard, wastewater is starting to increase. And this would make sense as people have gathered and traveled during their vacations. I know it's tough to have a measure expire yesterday only to have it re-implemented. It's hard to put toothpaste back in the tube. And it'll also be hard to enforce given where people are at now. So even if we don't pass the motion, it's critically important to people that they get the idea that this is not yet over. It's essential that we continue to take measures and stay vigilant, take measures within our realms. But we also must be aware that measures by government will be necessary if we see large increases of cases once again, or a variant that might pass through our defensive layers and cause more harm. I really hope I'm wrong. I don't want to be right about this. But if learning to live with COVID means we lose another SS Victoria every year, it's not a risk I'm willing to live with. Thanks.
I have Counselor Hopkins next.
Yes, thank you. And I'm just going to start off with a couple of comments and really appreciate the motion that is being brought to us and why we are here right now. And it is, to me, highlighted the importance of masks. We heard from Dr. Summers, the importance of that layered approach, physical distancing, the masks. If I had a wish, when I think back, I wish we did not remove the bylaw that we put in place. And maybe that would continue the conversation of should be extended or not. But unfortunately, we did that. I want to address one important thing here, or two important things. The first one is the importance that we as Londoners should continue to wear masks. We're not over that hump and we're going to go through a number of waves. I understand schools, boards that have continued with their masking policies, which are really important. But I, I think what is the most upsetting to me has been the approach of, that the confrontation of three colleagues that I hold in high esteem, that really has not, has really shown that polarization and the divisiveness. And I, 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 it showed that we are not able to somehow connect with one another because these three individuals have brought forward a motion to protect Londoners, to protect the greater community. And I really want to emphasize that to not only council, but to Londoners. And I want to thank them for their belief in trying to do everything possible to protect the greater community. And I want to thank them for that. I won't be supporting their emotion, but that does not, but it, it underlines the importance of the masks in our community. And I would like to encourage Londoners to keep on wearing their masks. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Cassidy and then Counselor Hamu on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just want to weigh in a little bit here. I want to thank Counselor Turner for his comments because when we enacted this bylaw originally in July 2020, he had a conflict as he was head of infectious diseases at the Middlesex London Health Unit. And he was, at the time, one of the co-leads of the health unit along with Dr. Summers in directing the COVID response of the health unit. So because of that conflict, he could not weigh in and, and, and that was unfortunate. But now we are two years later and all of the experience and knowledge and wisdom that he has gained having been on those front lines fighting COVID is very beneficial to this council. I will remind colleagues that actually Counselor Helmer, the mayor, Counselor, former Counselor Kayabaga and I brought a motion back in July 2020. Nobody asked us to do this. Nobody directed us to do this. We brought a motion to direct civic administration to consult with the medical officer of health on what a bylaw could look like if we were to enact a masking bylaw. And Dr. Mackey consulted with civic administration and the result was the bylaw that this council enacted. I don't believe it was as contentious as this proposal is today, but it definitely did not get an easy passage. There was a great deal of debate and discussion on whether or not we were overstepping our authority at that time. As Counselor Helmer has already said, this is not about keeping a mask mandate in place indefinitely. We are so close to that spring, whether we've had a taste of it. We are so close to people having the ability to eat out on patios rather than inside, to having people gather and meet with their friends on a walk in the park instead of inside with coffee or something like that. So the ability for people to congregate in greater numbers outside compared to inside will make things safer in general and will allow us to then not mask up as often as poss, as we, as we should be doing now. It's a temporary thing. The way I view this has been written as a temporary thing. We just
Okay, can I do a quorum check? Colleagues, just turn on your screen. Okay. Yeah, we're good for a quorum. Okay, so we're back in public session, colleagues. I'm going to ask... Have councillor Lehman report out from our in-camera session.
Thank you. I'll report out that the subject for what we adjourned to in session, matters were advanced. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're back to the speakers' list and I had councillor Turner as next on the public speakers' list. Councillor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and I appreciate we're coming up on the four o'clock hour, so I'll try to be brief and I just, I recognize that everyone's pretty tired of this and I mentioned we're probably getting tired of the debate too. So I'm not imagining there's going to be a lot of support for this motion, but I want to describe why I felt important to support councillor Helmer in his motion. Health decisions shouldn't be made on a populist basis. I agree that the, I agreed to support the motion because I believe the provincial government has been a bit premature in removing these public health measures and there's still an appreciable risk in our community. It's also backed up by opinion from the members of the provincial science table as well. The question of overreach has been brought up a bit and, but it was municipalities that first brought masking bylaws in the first place. They also were the first to bring in smoking bylaws. We have a history of watching out for residents. Municipalities are responsible for the wellbeing of those within their jurisdictions and we're also allowed to bring bylaws to that effect, provided they don't conflict with provincial or federal orders. Province rescinded its order and that's their prerogative, but this isn't a case of contradicting it or superseding it, as has been misstated earlier. It's just exercising within our space and we're permitted to do that. There's no one measure that's going to protect us. Protections are most effective in layers so that if one layer is defeated, there's another one to back it up. Masks are about one of them and really it's one of the lowest measures of control in the hierarchy. Getting vaccinated, staying home when sick, distancing, limiting contacts, they all have more impact on reducing transmissions, but they also have more impact on the level of activity within the community. And likewise, it would also be foolish to say that because COVID is affecting us globally, it doesn't make sense to take measures at the federal level or affecting us nationally, it doesn't make sense to take them at the provincial level or if it's affecting us provincially, it doesn't make sense to take local action. This recommendation is to maintain at least one level of control with minimal impact on people's ability to engage in social, retail and workspaces throughout our community. Everyone in this debate will find some shelter in something that was said by someone someplace. There's a diversity of opinion out there and a lot of contortion about what others have said to fit opinion to. I spent the last two years of my career working shoulder to shoulder with the doctors, epidemiologists and infection control practitioners who've been tasked with our local and provincial response to this pandemic. This is the stuff I know intimately and I'm not just speaking off the cuff. Some things that we've noticed, those jurisdictions that were quick to respond saw lower impacts down the road. Those that lagged ended up having to take more impactful measures later. And unfortunately, Ontario has this trend of being one of the jurisdictions that have been slow to implement and early to lift measures and this has resulted in large swings in cases throughout the waves. It's got to be noted that each of the previous waves was only brought under control through the use of public health interventions. My hope with this motion is that we can continue to take small measures so that we can avoid more costly stay-at-home orders later. The city's largest disaster was the Victoria disaster in 1881, saw approximately 182 Londoners die when this team of Victoria capsized. In the past two years, there's been a total of 356 deaths in our region. That's the equivalent of one Victoria disaster each year. This past wave, the wave we're just getting through, had roughly as many deaths as the previous two highest casualty waves and those occurred before we had vaccines. In 2020 and 2021, case counts started to increase just after March break and led to our first and third waves. We're starting to see the same indicators now. As you heard, wastewater is starting to increase and this would make sense as people have gathered and travelled during their vacations. I know it's tough to have a measure expire yesterday only to have it re-implemented. It's hard to put toothpaste back in the tube. And it'll also be hard to enforce given where people are at now. So even if we don't pass the motion, it's critically important to people that they get the idea that this is not yet over. It's essential that we continue to take measures and stay vigilant, take measures within our realms, but we also must be aware that measures by government will be necessary if we see large increases of cases once again or a variant that might pass through our defensive layers and cause more harm. I really hope I'm wrong. I don't want to be right about this, but if learning to live with COVID means we lose another SS Victoria every year, it's not a risk I'm willing to live with. Thanks.
I have councillor Hopkins next.
Yes, thank you. And I'm just going to start off with a couple of comments and really appreciate the motion that is being brought to us and why we are here right now. And it is, to me, highlighted the importance of masks. We heard from Dr. Summers the importance of that layered approach, physical distancing, the masks. If I had a wish, when I think back, I wish we did not remove the bylaw that we put in place and maybe that would continue the conversation of should be extended or not. But unfortunately, we did that. I want to address one important thing here or two important things. The first one is the importance that we as Londoners should continue to wear masks. We're not over that hump and we're going to go through a number of waves. I understand schools, boards that have continued with their masking policies, which are really important. But I, I think what is the most upsetting to me has been the approach of, that the confrontation of three colleagues that I hold in high esteem that really has not, has really shown that polarization and the divisiveness. And I, I, it showed that we are not able to somehow connect with one another because these three individuals have brought forward a motion to protect Londoners, to protect the greater community. And I really want to emphasize that to not only council, but to Londoners. And I want to thank them for their belief in trying to do everything possible to protect the greater community and I want to thank them for that. I won't be supporting their motion, but that does not, but it, it underlines the importance of the masks in our community and I would like to encourage Londoners to keep on wearing their masks. Thank you.
Councillor Cassidy and then councillor Hamu on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just want to weigh in a little bit here. I want to thank councillor Turner for his comments because when we enacted this bylaw originally in July 2020, he had a conflict as he was head of infectious diseases at the Middlesex London Health Unit and he was, at the time, one of the co-leads of the health unit along with Dr. Summers in directing the COVID response of the health unit. So because of that conflict, he could not weigh in and, and that was unfortunate. But now we are two years later and all of the experience and knowledge and wisdom that he has gained having been on those front lines fighting COVID is very beneficial to this council. I will remind colleagues that actually councillor Helmer, the mayor, councillor, former councillor Kayabaga and I brought a motion back in July 2020. Nobody asked us to do this, nobody directed us to do this. We brought a motion to direct civic administration to consult with the medical officer of health on what a bylaw could look like if we were to enact a masking bylaw. And Dr Mackey consulted with civic administration and the result was the bylaw that this council enacted. I don't believe it was as contentious as this proposal is today, but it definitely did not get an easy passage. There was a great deal of debate and discussion on whether or not we were overstepping our authority at that time. As councillor Helmer has already said, this is not about keeping a mask mandate in place indefinitely. We are so close to that spring weather, we've had a taste of it. We are so close to people having the ability to eat out on patios rather than inside, to having people gather and meet with their friends on a walk in the park instead of inside with coffee or something like that. So the ability for people to congregate in greater numbers outside compared to inside will make things safer in general and will allow us to then not mask up as often as we, as we should be doing now. It's a temporary thing. The way I view this has been written as a temporary thing. We just need a few more weeks to get past this cold weather so that people can follow the trends exactly as councillor Van Holst said. Over the last two years, we've seen numbers wane and I would say we enacted the bylaw in 2020 in July when numbers had come down, cases had come down, deaths had come down. But yet we enacted a bylaw in 2020 because we knew that we had to do something. And I believe that we are here right now where we, we should do something to get us past this little bit of winter. It is not about telling people how to live their lives. It is not about dictatorial control or anything like that. It's keeping measures in place for a little longer and we do know that mask mandates help. It's, if for no other reason, there are many people that do choose to follow rules and then at the same time, it's a signal to the community that this is still happening. And in fact, case counts and deaths are higher, much higher now than they were when we enacted the bylaw in July of 2020. Dr Summers spoke about organizations doing what is within their power to encourage mask wearing. And when we spoke about this at the last board of health meeting just recently, the words that he used were organizations should use the tools at their disposal to encourage mask wearing in indoor public settings. One of the tools at our disposal as a municipal council is the enactment of a bylaw. Thank you.
Councillor Hamu.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Forcing masks as politicians without at least our own medical officer of health mandating is, in my opinion, an overreach of government in this case. We don't have agreement from any medical officer of health in any jurisdiction that this should be happening. London does not have higher or lower numbers than the rest of Ontario. There's no extra threat. So why must Londoners be mandated to mask up if no other place in Ontario is masking up? We don't have jurisdictional control over schools, which is where the majority of the spread is happening. Realistically, we cannot enforce it, at least not for another two weeks. It will continue to create problems for city and frontline staff who've been withstanding the worst of attacks from anti-maskers. This is going to be so confusing for people. Another mandate will just make it harder to enforce a mandate when it is actually required. Furthermore, our medical officer of health has provided recommendations that he strongly encourages the continued wearing of masks as well as continuing to educate Londoners on the tools at their disposal to mitigate COVID spread. But the decision to wear a mask should remain to individuals and, sorry, to individuals and families to choose. People want to move on with their lives without mandates. And we have to respect people's choices and let them assess their own health risks like the rest of the province. So this is why I'm going to be voting no on this.
Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And thank you to colleagues for this discussion. I know it's long and contentious, but it is important to have a safe place, to have open dialogue of what is public health measures? What are the tools available to us? And just because we want to be done with COVID does not mean that COVID by any means is done with us. I don't, I believe this is one of the worst times the province could have picked to lift the mask mandate coming in a March break where some families finally felt safe to connect with each other, with friends, travel locally and abroad. And now they're all back together. Kids are in school and we will definitely see numbers go up in a few weeks. Having heard from the business community in London, they've raised the concern about the abuse and confrontation that frontline retail workers have taken. And they have asked that if we do implement this bylaw that they don't want to be the ones to enforce it as people come into their stores. They want the city to do it. And I don't believe we would have the resources to do that. Masks have already come off and trying to get them back on would be even more contentious as one layer of government saying yes and everyone saying it's completely contradictory to this. So I will be unable to support the mask bylaw today, but I will, as I'm hosting my first ward meeting in person in a couple of years, tomorrow evening, I've offered residents in-person and virtual options and I will be masked at it. My masking helps protect the community, Londoners and the vulnerable and I encourage Londoners to do the same. I know we're tired of it, but for the next couple of weeks, please make that choice to mask up for others. Be vigilant, be kind and please be compassionate. Thank you.
Councillor Van Meere Bergen.
Thank you, acting mayor. The, we, we find ourselves in a position now where we have the chief medical officer of health for the entire province of Ontario, indeed, the government of Ontario, that has said now is the time mask wearing is optional. And yet somehow, our council, our municipal council, seems to think we know better and that we can move forward with a masking bylaw, a mandate, force our residents to wear a mask on pain of financial fines. And I find that to be significantly disrespectful. I think if the province and the chief medical officer of health and all the advisors that go with that are saying mask wearing is optional and then we come along and we say, no, no, we know better. We're going to make it absolutely mandatory. We're going to pass this nice bylaw and we're going to force you to wear masks. I, again, I find that to be definitely disrespectful. And so I will not be supporting this bylaw. The residents of London, Ontario are thinking rational human beings. They can make the decision. We're two years into this. There's a lot more information now than when we started. And for these reasons and many more, I will not be supporting this proposed bylaw that's before us today.
Councillor Cassidy, I see your hand up. Is that leftover or is that new? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume it was leftover. Any other speakers? Okay, it seems like we've exhausted the debate. Before we vote, councillor Van Holst?
Yes, yes, thank you. If I can conclude too. Like councillor Hamu, I think this is an issue of government overreach and that is a big problem because it's always, it's always getting a reaction. You know, there's always going to be pushing against it and, you know, this is something that we can, that can be allowed to go. Councillor Turner himself said of the measures for protecting against COVID, this is the lowest, this is the lowest measure. And that, I think that came across in Dr Summers' comments as, as well. We don't really know how, how effective this is going to be and people have tried very hard for two years. And back, you know, back in the day when we proposed a temporary measure, remember it was just two weeks to flatten the curve. You know, calling this a temporary measure now, I, I don't think is valid because it's really just adding on to the, to the years that, that people have been struggling against this. There's a few questions I still would have liked to, to ask. However, you know, I think we're, we're getting to the end here. For us to come up with other ways to make people into a criminal is, is, is not, is not the thing we should, we should be doing. Many people, if...
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Go ahead, councillor Cassidy.
We don't enforce the criminal code of Canada here. A bylaw is not making anyone a criminal. That's very inflammatory, that language. I ask that councillor to withdraw.
Councillor, the, councillor's correct. It's, thank you for withdrawing.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So there it is. We're, we're creating a situation where people get fined for, for their behavior. And that, you know, that's, that's something I don't think we need to do. Most of the time, you could just, we could just ask. And what people want and the hundreds of people that have phoned in and written in are asking for the opportunity to make their own decision here. And I think they, and I think they can do it. And I believe they understand that when they're feeling sick, they can stay home and wear a mask. When they're feeling healthy, that's, that's not something they'll, they'll need to do. And so obviously, I, I, for the same reasons I voted against it last time, will vote against it this time. But I appreciate that we're having an opportunity to, to get past this and that's what people really want. So I hope we support them because that's what our community is asking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That has exhausted our speakers' list, colleagues. If there, since there's no other speakers that I see, I am going to call the question, which is the motion moved by councillor Hammer, seconded by councillor Turner to introduce a bylaw at tonight's council meeting on the temporary requirement for use of face coverings. I'll open that for voting.
Mr. Presiding Chair, it's councillor Hopkins. I vote no.
Councillor Turner?
I was just looking for, I didn't describe it, it hadn't come up. Oh, sorry, I know what happened there. My apologies.
Closing the vote, the motion is lost.
Okay, I need a motion to receive the, councillors, councillor Lehman, seconded by councillor Fife-Miller. This will be done in the system. I'll open this for voting.
Councillor Hopkins votes yes.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed.
Okay, that ends item 4.1. This is a special meeting, there are no deferred matters or additional business items. Before I call for a German, colleagues, I need nobody to leave this meeting. After I adjourn, I am going to call the council meeting to order and then we're going to have a recess to turn it around. We're required to start council by 4:30, so I'm going to call it to order on this live stream. Then we will continue it on the council live stream. So after I adjourn, don't go anywhere because I'm about to call another meeting to order after I do a quorum check again for councils. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn this SPPC meeting. Councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillors Hillier. It's ready in the system, so that'll open in a second.
Hopkins?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Closing the vote, the motion's carried. Thirteen.
Okay, the SPPC meeting is adjourned. I'm going to do a quorum check for municipal council for today. If colleagues could turn on their cameras. Okay, I'm going to call municipal council to order. This is the fifth meeting of municipal council. I'm going to make all of the requisite statements and open it up and move through the items of the meeting on a council livestream. So now that I've called council to order, I'm going to look for a motion to recess for 20 minutes to allow the transition out of the former SPCC meeting and into the council meeting. Councillor Van Holst, seconded by councillor Van Meere Bergen. Although, this will be by hand, so all those in favor of a recess for 20 minutes?
That motion is carried.
We are in recess for 20 minutes. We'll be back here for the full municipal council meeting.